Islam, Islam, Islam. Peace and love, peace and love, peace and love. We are here, we are here, we are here. Islam greetings and thank you all to all who have joined and all who will see this later. Uh, yeah, we're here y'all. It's our Saturday uh study sessions, you know, we made it consistent. I like that. I like that. Alright, um, so yeah, this week we go, I'm just gonna jump right in, right? We're gonna keep it moving with Blank History Month. Again, if you don't, I'm looking at two different spots first of all, you know, um, because I'm recording in two different spot, um, places. But yeah, we're gonna continue again with the theme of Blank History Month. Because if you know your etymology, you know that black and blank mean the same thing. Ain't nothing there, right? Um, yeah, and that's gonna actually play a lot into tonight's sharing, right? Uh, but before I get started with that, again, let me say thank you and Islam and greetings to all those who showing up and all those who will watch later. Um, I am Sister Tahita Asnajee Alal of Kalifa Media dot com and Mercy Charities dot com, few more, a few other things, you know? Um, yeah, we gather here each Saturday during the Sabbath hour and I barely made it this week, but I did make it the Sabbath hour, seventh day, seventh hour of the evening, right? Um, so yeah, trying to stay consistent with the Saturn energy. Because uh, if you study Vedic and Baltic and Slavic astrology, you'll find out that Moors are ruled by, or Saturn rules Swarthy skin people, right? And I like it because it rules discipline, karma, and it's the only planet that has two, that rules two adjacent sides, or two consecutive sides. So anyway, um, real quick before I jump into my notes that I have because why? I respect your time, right? Real quick, um, one update, uh, because it kept coming up again responding to my human design, or yeah, responding to my human design, which is to respond, right? Um, some people a few weeks back asked me about my paperwork and how I submitted a notice of, a constructive notice of 508 status, right? And how, um, if you wanted that paperwork, just add, you know, email me at Islam@kalifamedia.com or info@kalifamedia.com and I'll, I'll send that to you. And it came up again. Somebody asked me about the paperwork to go with it and I forgot that, um, okay, so I sent that off, right? Letting them know I'm a 508 corporation, which is kind of like a 501(c)(3), except I don't have to comply with the whole, um, no political activism part and donations to my company, corporation or whatever, or the corporation I run, manage, whatever, um, are taxed exempt and we do not have to file or let you know what we're doing because of the way we're set up and because of our corporate mission, right? So it's basically none ya, one of those things, a notice of none ya, none of your business, right? So that went through and Islam is like airbender. Yeah, that's funny because I'm a Gemini sun lever rising. So that's funny you say that. So anyway, uh, ha, ha, ha. Um, I sent that off, the constructive notice of status as a 508 corporation, letting the state and the feds know I'm not in it, right? I'm just over here doing my business, minding my business and I recognize that you're an occupier and you can't tax me because I'm not in Rome and neither are you, right? So uh, so that 30 days passed, no response, right? Um, so now, and it was timely because they just came out with this thing where you gotta do this crazy reporting if you have a LLC. And if you don't report in a timely manner, they get to impose all these fines on you. But like I said, I have it set up. It was, it is an LLC, but because of the way it's set up, you can't mess with it, right? So I sent that off and then, um, no response, which is great, right? Because in that, and if you want it, again, email me and I'll send, um, send your copy of it. Or better yet, I'll get into what, um, I'm gonna do with it. So you don't even have to email me. You could just access it, right? Uh, but I'll get into that. So, um, the follow-up, you didn't respond. Great. That means you accepted. It's been more than 30 days according to maximums at law, right? It's been more than 30 days. So you accept, you actually yes. And I put in there the, um, tracking number for the document to show when it was delivered and that you had it for the, at least 30 days and then you couldn't say nothing. You got it delivered, right? But I'm not gonna sit on that just to make sure because I know, I know how it works, but I know who I'm dealing with too. Y'all cheat and y'all play dirty. So now I'm going to follow up with a, um, verified notice of acceptance of 508 status, right? I'm not gonna go too deep into it because like I said, I'm gonna write it down and then y'all can just go get it. Because I figure it's more expedient to just help y'all do this stuff so we can all just make a big old problem and they'll be like, it's too many of them. It's a wave, it's, it's a trickle. We know there's gonna be a wave because how fast this trickle is coming. And I'm not gonna sell it to you because I don't need your money like that, right? I don't think that's, whatever. I'm not gonna go into it. But anyway, I'm, um, send out a verified notice of acceptance of my 508 status just to make sure like, yeah, I sent this and now I'm following up to let you know that yes, I did send this, right? You didn't say anything. So it's been more than 30 days according to maximums of law, which don't even have to be written down because everybody knows this. Um, so now I'm just letting you know that I know that you know, that kind of thing. And I'm sending it as verified as in, um, putting the notary signature, uh, notary stamp on it. So that if you, just in the event that you all try to make some problems, I have my stuff backed up and back, the backup backed up, right? They never responded and then I sent them an affidavit saying that they never responded. It's an opportunity to cure, but it's not really because there's nothing you can do about it. So you can't cure it. So anyway, so that's that. Alright, so. That's the updates. Now to the Blank History Month thing, right? Um, this is our town hall meeting because once again I'm responding. I know what to do because people tell me what to do, not like ordering me around. It's like, okay, if the same question keeps coming up, that's probably where you need to be directing your attention, that kind of thing. Get the people what they want, right? And I'm not gonna keep y'all too long because, um, yeah, I'm busy and I'm guessing you all too are too. So I got my stuff ready to go. So town hall meeting, Mercy Charities, right? Um, so last week, um, I went into how Mercy Charities did extreme, did pretty good. It's, okay, backing up. Mercy Charities began December of 2021. So really you can't even say it started until January of 2022. Twenty twenty, the fiscal year of 2022 from January to December, right? Um, Mercy Charities collected some, some money, but gave away a whole bunch of money by mistake to Rise of the Moors. I'm just gonna call that a mistake. But not really, right? I kept saying, I wish I hadn't helped them, but it, it came back and it's coming back in, in another way too. So yeah, um, I wish I had helped somebody else. I wish I hadn't helped them. But it, it, you know, you take one step, what'd they say? Give Allah loan? I don't, it's like, what? Yeah, give Allah a loan. It's not really a loan because everything belongs to Allah. But if you just give it, knowing that you're doing something for Allah, because one of these people actually said they prayed for our help the night before we gave it to them. And uh, it'll, you'll, you'll get back, get it back. Don't even worry about it. So anyway, 2022 collected a good amount, gave or donated, granted, whatever you wanna call it, a greater amount, right? 2023, Moors showed up and showed out and came through unbelievably well. And, um, just, it was a phenomenal year. You can see all the paperwork and all the numbers on Mercy, M R C I charities.org. Everything is up there. Or you can go on to guidestar.org and you'll see candid, a big old orangish yellow thing come up and just look for Mercy charities or just go, well, Google does, it doesn't work. It turns out there's a lot of companies with the name Mercy, uh, but not the way we have it. So anyway, so all that's out there and, um, so that's what we covered last week. And because of what happened in 2022 and 2023, for 2024, we were able to hit the ground running with foundations.org. This is a recap from last week. Where you, based on what you've already done, right? You can now go into the minor leagues to, to, to hopefully one day end up into the major leagues, right? So we've made our way into the major minors. Yay, Moors, right? Because I could not have, I just set it up, right? It wasn't even my idea. Another war came for, to me for some help. We got denied for this grant. You not set up right. Let me set up something. Okay, cool. Too bad you were in the wrong country for me to help you, but hey, I can at least do something where I'm at. That's where Mercy Charities came from. Alright? So it wasn't even my idea. Then the Moors funded it, right? Um, because my, or not my, Mercy Charities, um, cash out was just like always all that cha-ting, 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 cha-ting. All last year because of how generous the Moors were and I wasn't even doing anything. And then, uh, Moors were setting up fundraisers on their own and based on you all's activity, we qualified for the minors, right? And so now, uh, and I talked about how, uh, what was it? Blank History Month? And we went into the definition of black, right? And I said, I would get into why our stuff is kind of working and this black stuff is never gonna work, right? Despite them working on it for like since 1865, it's like, it ain't gonna work, right? Y'all, because y'all, y'all keep saying with the black stuff, you know, calling yourselves nothing. So, um, I wanted to go further into that and give examples of why, um, even though black ain't real, there's some other stuff out there that's not real either, but because of the way they got it set up, they got it working for them. And I'm gonna go into that, right? And I'm probably, I'm gonna try not to keep y'all too long, Islam. So actually I'm gonna just read what I have on here, right? So the heirs of the Holocaust, I'm gonna use them as an example. I like using other people as examples. Because it's, it not, Moors don't think it's possible for ourselves because we've been so like trampled upon, that kind of thing. So it's just like, nah, I can't be that easy. Nah, I can't be that easy. Well, what if I tell you it's already been done by somebody else? Somebody else already laid the groundwork for us, for us to use it. Not saying they did it for us. They did it for themselves. But refusal of us to use it undoes it for them. So if we get any problems, we get to say, well, undo it for them. And then though thems, them thems, they'll fight for, to keep it for themselves. Uh, for instance, it's homeschooling. Um, you would be surprised how many Jewish, Mennonite, Amish and Quaker groups fought for the homeschooling rights we now get to enjoy as Moors. I'm just saying. So if I can't use it, they can't use it either. And then if you want to challenge me using it, um, I'm gonna drag them into it. And you don't want to deal with that because that's a big old unnecessary mess, right? So I'm using the heirs of the Holocaust, the, um, the Jew-ish heirs of the Holocaust as an example, right? Because maybe if Moors can see, see how it worked for them, this is how we can make it work for us type of thing. So. The heirs of the Holocaust, so-called Holocaust, I'm gonna call it so-called, right? Because my dictionary says it's a sacrifice of your own. You can't sacrifice somebody else. That's not a sacrifice, right? You gotta give up something that you cherish. So sacrifice of your own, burnt sacrifice specifically. Anyway, their survivors, I don't know if y'all heard about this. And it's, I just found out about it on the first of February because I think it got released on January 31st. Hilarious, hilarious, right? Islam to y'all. Um, so apparently New York, the governor, so at the beginning of January, she announced, oh yeah, it's an election year, but that ain't got nothing to do with it. We forming a committee. This is what came up last week too. We forming a committee to think about maybe possibly in some time down the road, forming a committee to discuss the possibility of someday maybe giving black folks reparations. It's always like that. It's always a committee, right? And, um, so they announced it had a whole like, um, the pictures with all the sellouts behind her, you know, the civil rights people that whatever. They, some of them were colored, then, no negro, they were born colored, then they were negro. Then they helped form African-American or black. They accepted black and then they helped form African-American. They, these people, Jesse Jackson and Al Sharpton, I'm just gonna call them out. They have sat through and watched their names themselves change at least four times. And now it's the fifth one with BIPOC, right? Which sounds like a disease, right? Which, yeah, how appropriate. But anyway, so, um, she announced their, their latest committee. Fast forward to the end of the same month and remember that's a committee. Fast forward to the end of the very same month, a few days prior to the beginning of Blank History Month. And this woman, same woman announces, hey, we just got 183 million dollars back for the Holocaust, the heirs of the Holocaust survivors, because the Holocaust survivors are gone, right? Um, most of them are gone. So I'm just like, what? I'm like, first of all, that's hilarious that first of January, we gonna get these niggas some money. End of January, yeah, anyway, we gonna talk about them. We actually got them some millions. And not even the people that went through this, that went through the suffering. These are their heirs. You talking about their grandchildren and great grandchildren at this point. They gone, right? So I actually looked into that, like, what is this, right? And again, it's setting precedent, right? So I'm just like, how's that possible that New York State, not even a nation, is paying out money for the acts supposedly? I'm not a denier. I'm not saying it didn't happen. I'm saying it wasn't committed by who's, who they blaming. Alright? So why is New York State having to pay for something that Germany supposedly did? I need to look this up because I don't want to look stupid, um, assuming stuff, right? So anyway, um, so I was just looking like, how is that possible that New York State, with his, a side of another nation that's already paying these people, right? The United States, which also didn't have nothing to do with this. They found some more money to pay the heirs of these people, not any actual direct victims, some vicarious people, right? Um, but before, and I'm like, how were they able to do this? But before I get into that, of course, we're gonna start with our definitions, right? So for tonight's list of definitions, we got, um, organization, right? Nationalization, reparations, and one that people don't bring up enough, restitution. Those are two different words for a reason, right? So tonight we got organization. That is the first thing, right? Because I was like, how did these people do this? You're, I'm not trying to get ahead of myself, but I know what I'm looking at just because I never bowed to a white Jesus. I was born a nation of Islam, right? And I was always told, these people are lying. Every word that comes out of their mouth, every word that comes out of everybody's mouth and even the people that look like you, they probably lying, right? Especially if they saying you black or from Africa or some craziness, right? So, um, this whole Israel thing is really coming up and it's just like, y'all already one of the richest countries in the world, but all you produce is tech, IT and, um, stolen Arab recipes, right? And I'm just like, so how y'all, and now you're not only getting bills in the capital passed on your already, you already get 3 billion dollars a year. They just found some more money to give you and now New York State is saying, we got even more money to give you. But they still, somehow we gonna discuss reparations for black folks, right? I'm not gonna even touch on how Obama broke everybody off in 2008 except black folks. And here's why. First definition, organization. So how did they do this, right? And you'll see why I said, if they get it as a fraud, black people are a fraud too. And it's like, y'all can't even get it right, even though it's been proven that if you're fraudulent, you can make stuff work if you just know how to do it right. So this is my Black Slaw Dictionary fourth edition with pronunciation key. So first definition, organization, N O P. Um, so I hope y'all doing well this Saturday evening. Um, I know I'm doing great. Uh, organization. Organization. Okay, I got organized. I don't see organization, but I got organized, right? Organized, to establish or furnish with organs, to systemize, to put into working order, to arrange in order for the normal exercise of its appropriate functions. And then it's got the citation. Um, the word organize as used in railroad and other charters ordinarily signifies the choice and qualifications of all necessary officers for the transaction of the business of the corporation, right? I'm gonna look up corporation. This is usually done after all the capital stock has been subscribed for. So we need leadership and we need a record of who all is in our nation. Got it? So do we, do black folks have any of that, right? They got a bunch of celebrities, right? God, and these dusty dudes, I wish they would just go away. It's like, we all still around, right? The guys who were like, they were old when I was young, right? I'm almost 50. They were old when I was young. Uh, Messy Jesse, you know, slick, fat, then skinny Al, right? I can't stand these dudes because they cause so much confusion, right? Um, nation of Islam ain't exempt either, just because they kept calling, they saying it's a nation of Islam. Even though there are Islamic nations not calling themselves that. They have something else going on. It's under religion is, you can change your religion. You can't change your nationality, that kind of thing, right? So that's organization, um, or to organize. I'm not gonna even go into corporation. So organize, we gotta get together. Our people collectively need to get together and select some officers, ministers in the case of a government, right? Islam y'all. And then we need to issue stop. Who's within our nation? You know, I'm not saying like, you can not birth certificates, birth records. We need to have an accounting of who, accounting, I love accounting, being counting, right? Who's in our nation? We can't just be like a board. You can, you actually can. Because there's the thing of the, the five Moors of Sri Lanka. I think it's Sri Lanka. Or the five Tamil Moors. It might be Tamil, right? Where it was just five of them, five guys, and they happen to represent a bunch of families, right? But really it's just five of them and they represent a nation, right? Um, I'm gonna put it into the, um, graphics when I upload this to YouTube because I'm gonna find it. But anyway, the, uh, next definition was nationalization, right? I don't want to go into corporation, even though I probably should just because it's bugging me. So I'm gonna go into corporation real quick. Um, corporation, there it is. Wow, really? Okay, so corporate and corporate, corporation is one, two, three, four pages. Wow. Wow, okay. Um, I'm just gonna read the fourth, first one. Um, okay, corporation, an artificial person or legal entity created by or under the authority of the laws of a state or nation composed in some rare instances of a single person and his successors. Being the incumbent, so like a monarchy, being the incumbents of a particular office, but ordinarily consisting of an association of numerous individuals who subsist as a body politic under a special denomination which is regarded under, which, which, which is regarded in law as having a personality and existence distinct from that of its several members and which is by the same authority vested with the capacity of continuous succession irrespective of changes in member, in its memberships, either in perpetuity or in limited terms of years and of acting as a unit or single individual in matters relating to the common purpose of the association within the scope and powers of authorities conferred upon such bodies by law. That was one sentence. Woo! Yeah, Islam y'all, peace. But anyway, so that's corporation, alright? So we organize, right? As a organs, right? Organs as a, I'm, I'm not saying anything new to Moors. Y'all, y'all know this. As a corporal body, right? And it can be passed on, just like we can pass on ourselves. We can be, join, create a new flesh, fleshly being and pass it on, right? So I'm gonna get to the point. Nationalization. I'm glad I read that one. Nationalization. Uh, real quick. And I'm gonna get, all of this relates, I'm giving you the definitions first because I'm gonna be using these terms as I go into why black folks will never get reparations, even though people faker than them are getting them, alright? So, um, nationality. Nationality. Again, I'm not saying anything new to Moors. Y'all been look this stuff up. Nationale, there's nationale, nationale, nationale. Nationality, the quality or characteristic which arises from the fact of a person's belonging to a nation or state. Nationality determines the political status, and it's got that in italics, of the individual, especially with reference to allegiance. While domicile determines, domicile determines his civil status. Wow. Uh, nationality arises either by birth or by naturalization. According to Savini, Savigni, nationality is also used as opposed to territoriality for the purpose of distinguishing the case of a nation having no national territory. Oh, okay, I like that. And then it goes into the citation. Alright, so next term. Get through these real quick because I want to get to the meat of this stuff. Reparations. Because I don't want to have to be like, I don't want y'all thinking like, what does she mean this? Nope. We all gonna be working off the same definition. You might have your interpretation. I got my interpretation, but I'm not interpreting. I'm just looking it up in the book of law because all of this pertains to law. I want to be able to use this, right? People don't, law doesn't care about your interpretation. They's like, okay, where is it written? Um, let's see, or can you back up what you're saying, that kind of thing. So reparations, I'm sorry. Reparations, reparations, reparations. Replevan, I gotta, I like that word, replevan. Repormentio, reorganization, repair. Reparation, to redress of it, the redress of an injury. Amends for a wrong inflicted. Okay. And then what is restitution? Restitution. That's not the definition I thought it was. That's interesting. I thought it would be something related to nations. Anyway, restitution. Um, restitution, the one that so-called black folks never bring up. Reparations, y'all ain't never gonna get it because reparations are for nations. Um, which is kind of, I'll get into the history of that in a minute. Rested, is it in here? Rested, no, that's restricted. Okay, restitution. There it is, restitution. Act of restoring, restoration, restoration of anything to its rightful owner. The act of making good or giving equivalent for any loss, damage or injury and indemnification. Alright. So for whatever reason, I couldn't find it in here where it says there reparations because it's in the wordations. Um, reparations is for nations, right? Which is why black folks can't get nowhere. If they went after restitution, they might actually get further. Because while I cannot prove you need to give me the funds to restore my nation's reparations, I can prove that you damaged my people personally, um, and demand restitution. But for whatever reason, black folks don't, they don't go after restitution. Y'all gotta ask yourselves why. It's one of those things like, uh, when you sue somebody that ran over your foot, you don't just sue for the doctor's bill. You sue for a new pair of shoes too. Why you gonna stop, right? And ask for triple what everything costs. So then if you get half, you still get more than you really need, that kind of thing, right? So, uh, yeah, they stopped too short, but it's understandable. It's like, y'all don't even have the basic straight. You're calling yourselves black. You're telling every, the world, I don't deserve anything because you can't, I can't justify my place in history where you owe me anything, right? Um, but anyway, so, so they go all in definitions. Oh, I was trying to look up reparations in my, I'm not gonna pick this thing up. My unabridged dictionary, real quick, reparations. And again, thank you to the Moors for being here, for being here with me. Because I could just read this off as a video essay, but it feels so weird sitting here talking to myself. It feels like super weird. Reparations. So I appreciate y'all. Reparation. Oh, there it is. Um, anything paid or done to make up for something else, compensation specifically and usually compensation by a defeated nation for damage done to civilians and their property in a war payable in money, labor, goods, etc. And then it has the, um, synonyms are recompense, atonement, indemnity. atonement, indemnity, satisfaction, remuneration, restitution, and repair. I look at the, uh, synonyms because sometimes they have this word, like, okay, we can sue you for reparations, but here go another way, we can sue you for restitution. Here go another way, we can sue you for repair. Look up all the words, sue them in all those ways. So, anyway, alright, so there it go. Reparations is for the repair of a nation. Restitution can be paid to an individual. Alright, and that's based on me reading, um, the definitions. So, back to the precedents being set by those who say they are Jews and are not. I'm just gonna say it, right? Cause it's, it's creeping into the age of Aquarius, it's time for everybody to get called out who needs to be called out, right? Um, prove me wrong, I'm just, I'm quoting the Bible. The book that these colonists came over here shoved down our throat even though we already had it. And they couldn't even interpret it correctly. So, anyway, it says there, there's a passion there that says, there's a synagogue of Satan, they say there are Jews and are not, alright? So, I'm talking about those people. And how their mischief has laid, kind of laid the path for us to get some stuff, right? At least for now, to be comfortable for now, because we're gonna end up with all of it eventually, because it's just destined, that kind of thing, right? So, New York State has an office set up in their treasury, alright? Specifically to address the provision of reparations and restitutions to the descendants of the crimes supposedly committed in, um, Europe during World War Two. I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'm not saying it happened, I'm saying it didn't happen the way they're saying it happened. So, interestingly, only one group, that Holocaust involved a ton of people, but only one group is getting paid for it. Why, right? So, um, only one group of the many victimized by the Nazis are receiving reparations or restitutions, even though they aren't a real nation, right? Excuse me, they paid restitution and reparations to Jewish people. That's not a nationality. I cannot convert to Chinese, get it? It's not a nationality. But they made it work, I'm gonna show y'all how, right? Cause I'm just looking at this like, this is just like, it's so clear, you know how stuff is so obvious, you, you thinking, that can't be it, I ha, I have to have this all the way wrong. But then you do your research and it's like, wow, sometimes it's so simple. You know, but hey, it's effective, despite how simple it is. So, anyway, um, Jewish isn't a nation. These are a bunch of Germans, Ukrainians, Russians, etc., practicing Judaism, right? And they are trying, trying, they can never, they'll never be able to do it because too many people are giving them too much pushback. They're trying to convert a religious bloodline into a nationality, right? How are they doing this? It's called organization, we just went into it. We get all our people together, all, so we can find out who's talented at what, and we're gonna put them to work for one common goal. Right? And I think they even said that their goal is to take over the entire planet. I'm not trying to put anybody, any names in anybody's mouth. But they show act like it, right? And everybody helps them despite them providing nothing but IT and matzo ball, and they stole the, or not matzo ball. Falafel, you know, they claim falafel is theirs, right? Okay, anyway. You know, uh, yeah, what's that BDS? Anyway, um, so, in order to get reparations, again, you must first organize. Once you organize, you can turn that organization into a nation, because y'all got a common culture, bloodline, blah, 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 blah. Now that you got yourself organized, you can go demand redress for the crimes that happened to your collective group. That's reparations, right? So, um, and once you get that sit, sit, situated, you can further demand restitution. Or you can do it, you can do it by yourself. Like, how is that that guy, even though all of us were subjected to captivity during, um, so-called slavery, only a few people were able to go and sue and get their forty acres. So, that person who got their forty acres, that's restitution. If we had all gotten it, that's reparations, but we weren't organized. You know, somebody, I forgot which, uh, teacher said it, that we aren't out talented or out smarter, we're out organized. You know, all the pe, all our people are off doing their own little thing in their own little corner. I'm guilty of it too, right? But here's my effort to like, uh, get over that, right? So, during the third, right, other groups were targeted by the Nazis, y'all know that, right? Including homosexuals, the disabled, the Roma people, the Sinti people, the Slavic people, the Baltic people, political opponents, um, people with opposing views, like religious views, like Jehovah's Witnesses, they were all targeted, right? And, um, black people, yeah, us too, or so-called black people, they were targeted too. So, how is it that the Ashkenazis have, despite all of these other people getting, having the same thing done to them, probably to a greater extent, because these people are proven what colossal liars they are, right? Unbelievable, unfathomable liars. I didn't think it was possible to be this big a liar, right? And then the number, when I was growing up, they said it was like twenty-some million, when I was in first grade. By the time I got to fifth grade, it was twelve million, I kid you not. By the time I graduated high school, it was six million. So, I don't know, right? I just know it used to be a whole bunch of us in Germany, and now there aren't. So, I don't know. But my point, my question is, how is it the Roma didn't get nothing, the Sinti didn't get nothing? Slavic people, the Poles, they didn't get nothing, well, they got a piece of Germany. Let me not leave it, they got a piece of Germany, I forgot about that, right? But anyway, and black folks, why did all these other people suffer just as much and probably worse, right? Because it's like one of those things, we gonna try, try it out on everybody else and then come after our own people, because we know, we know what we dealing with, with y'all. Right? So, we gotta have this perfect before we come, come, um, destroy ourselves. Um, yep. He didn't say he was gonna lead them and learn from them, he said he was gonna leave, okay, it says why the prophet, that's why the prophet Drew Ali instructed that he was going to leave the European in charge for us to learn from them, that's not what he said. He said learn government, who said we gotta learn it from them? Which government was he talking about? That's Moorish science, it's, it's not surface level. Every single word means something, and you better read them ball, right? But no, we're not learning nothing from them, we have our own government, right? So, we need to learn how to govern ourselves. They have a president, we have a grand, a supreme grand sheik. They have, what is that, senators and congressmen, we have ministers. They, they have, what do they have? Secretaries and all that stuff, we have ministers, alright? So, yeah, I know, you good, you good. Uh, but no, we, even though you paraphrase it, we gotta be careful because some people take stuff as gospel, right? And, uh, yeah, I've had to leave a couple of situations because it's just like, I can't be part of that. You like, what's that, that's that, uh, Claude Green type of stuff, who is, was it Alan Payne type of stuff? Right? We gonna switch that, just a couple of letters here and take out a, a few things there. Like, I actually found a, uh, what is that? A, a prophecy, a copy of the prophecies where the prophet said it's okay to eat pork. Okay, anyway, even though right before that, he said you can't have no clean meat unless somebody kill you a camel. You know, so that's why I'm careful with that stuff. But anyway, back to the stuff, why didn't these other people get paid? Right? How is this possible? Organization, right? Step one, right? Which is, I'm suggesting this for the moors because the prophet already came and did all this stuff, and I'm just like, I'm just repeating what he said, right? And we have a book, I'm going to repeat myself, it's up for revision, don't buy that one right now, because I'm about to revise it. Um, anyway, step one, unite and form a nation, alright? Without going too much into it at this time. Um, but these Jewish converts from various European, Baltic, and Slavic nations have all, for all intents and purposes, shared their true nationalities so that they might usurp a bloodline with which they have no connection, right? Even the Arabs, it's like, when they first got there, they said it, who was that, Nasser? Or one of them said it, like, yeah, y'all left black and came back white? Whatever, but, um, and then, uh, one. So, they're, uh, trying to shed their true nationalities, which they actually got some help with, right? To usurp a bloodline whith which they have no connection and convert that one bloodline into a whole nationality based on misinterpretations of a book that is not about them. So that they might convince fellow colonizing brethren to support their theft of one people's land in the name of another people, alright? So, they over there stealing these Palestinian land. I'm not saying they necessarily have more right to it than those folk, but they, actually, yes, they do, alright? Because my thing is, where y'all, where y'all before that war? You had all that time to move over there, right? And y'all did it. You waited until somebody was like, yeah, I colonized it for you, go kill all the natives. That's what y'all did, because there were Jews over there, but y'all weren't, what happened? So, that's how we know it ain't yours. Um. And the, the, it's just crazy, let me just keep going, it's just really nuts to me, right? So, the part that trips me out about the whole thing, so you are not Israelites, okay? And you are using the story of the Israelites to steal another people's land, alright? And it worked, of course it worked, because these one, one group of colonizers talking to another group of colonizers, alright? So, once their so-called nationality was set, again, Israeli, you, nobody ever know, ask, why don't they call themselves Israelites? They call themselves Israelis, alright? Once their so-called nationality was set, Israeli, then they were in a position to go, to set about making claims for reparations. Now that we've organized ourselves into a nation, now we can start making some claims against those that violated these people, right? Even though they weren't and aren't a real nation. So confident in their lies, were they, were they? That they had the nerve to demand compensation from a fake nation that had nothing to do with what happens, happened to them. I laugh at it daily. Our parasite has a parasite. Yes or no? The United States, a fake nation, is being clowned and punked daily. They trying to say, oh, this is the United States doing, okay, fine. But anyway, they're assisting, this fake nation, the United States, is being taken down by the actions of yet another fake state. It's beautiful, right? It's really beautiful, it's all these, these, and then, and then it was just this chick, I, I gotta post her a clip of what she said. She's from Tennessee, a Caucasian woman from Tennessee. And she said that, real talk, you know, paraphrasing what she said, we go around stealing everybody's identity because we have no identity of our own.
God, like, I, as a white American, it really took me, like, traveling a lot and living in other countries to realize how empty, um, how, how cut off I am from any of my ancestry. Now, I am actually, because I became a history major and really wanted to know the truth, I'm actually fairly, very aware of the horrifying things that my ancestors did. I'm a white woman from the South, okay? There, there's no denying that my ancestors are terrorists. But what I find very sad is that, like, here in France, I had to take, I know this is a little bit of a detour, but I'm gonna get back to Haladiya. I had to take courses to integrate into French culture. And I, four days, I sat in a class learning, what does it mean to be French? The French people know what that means. Now, they have a whole thing that they are in deep denial about their current and past colonial terrorism. Uh, and whatever, that's a whole nother video. But what French people do know is their, you know, they've been here for a long time, their food, that, like, there's a whole thing about being French. But when I, I'm asked, what does it mean to be American, a US American? I don't know. War, and because I'm a white US American, I have no identity, I don't know who the hell I am. What does it mean to be white US American? Ancestors are terrorists, like baseball hot dogs, war, what? I don't know, I don't even know. Like genocide, I don't even know, like, what is American? I don't know, because we're a colonial empire. And so, when I, I, I didn't realize until I started traveling how empty my culture is. So, I understand why white people do this, but it's not right. We're culture vultures, looking, it's like, it's like the, the little, the ugly duckling or whatever, who's like, are you my mommy? Are you my, like, we're just looking for, where the hell we come from? You know, I asked one of my family members when I was in Ireland, hey, I'm pretty sure we have, we're Irish too, right? Do you know what our names were? I don't know, we've been in the South a long time. Yeah, but we came from somewhere, we're not from here, we're not from the United States. Anyway, I just want to add that little caveat, I understand, with US Americans in particular, we don't even know where we come from. And then, because whiteness, whiteness, which is what the United States is founded on, this idea of whiteness to, to justify genocide and chattel slavery, uh, and anti-blackness in particular. Whiteness is empty, it means nothing. We had, we, all of our ancestors had to give up wherever we came from to be white. And so, yeah, it makes sense that Haladiya is just like, I'm Spanish because I need something. But it's annoying and it's wrong, and, um, she's getting called out for it, and then she's playing the victim like a true white woman.
I'mma, I'mma put it, you gotta watch it on, um, YouTube, I'mma clip it and put it into the video on YouTube. I was just like, wow. I always wondered what it was, I always thought it's like, you just trying to take people's stuff so you can sell it back to them? No, you're tofu. You have no flavor of your own. Anyway, so, um, they're fake. I'm just using this fake nation as an example and maybe an encouragement of why we can get our real stuff, right? So, again, back to Governor Holchel in New York. How, in the same month, we gonna work on getting these niggas some money. We gonna work on it. Hey, Jew-ish, here go a hundred and eighty-three million dollars for some stuff we didn't even do to y'all. Anyway, so Governor Holchel of New York recently announced the processing of another one hundred eighty-three million dollars in claims for the heirs of Jewish Holocaust survivors. These claims are processed through the Holocaust Claims Processing Office embedded within the New York State Department of Financial Services. These people are so well organized, they have a collection agency set up in the tax bureau in, in New York. You, um, that's just organization, because why can't it, why don't the Chinese have that? Why don't the Arabs have that? They, they actually bringing money into this country, right? Um, so, the purpose of this office is described as following. It was created to help Holocaust victims and their heirs recover assets deposited in banks, unpaid proceeds, proceeds of insurance policies issued by European insurers. And artworks that were lost, looted, and sold under arrest. So, I remember those, that artwork thing, how the Nazis in Europe were stealing those paintings and putting them in their homes in Europe? Or selling them to other people in Europe? So, why is New York paying for this? It just said, oh, the insurance pol, unpaid insurance policies issued by European insurance. Why is this being paid out by New York? It's, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying it's being done. So, it's possible, it's like, well, they doing it. And I tell my children, anything you see anybody else doing, you can do it. Alright, well, to an extent, like, well, that guy is like contortionist, I don't want, don't try that, that kind of thing. But it's, it's possible, but don't try that. But anyway, so, so, New York, which has nothing to, had nothing to do with the Holocaust like that, has an office set up in their, in the financial department specifically for the purpose of extracting money from New York to pay descendants of Europeans that commit, they com, that, descendants of Europeans, right? Anyway, so how? Organization. So, the other victims of the Holocaust aren't being shoved into the shadows, right? People like, well, what about the other people? Well, why aren't they getting paid? They're, um, allowing the European Jewish converts to corner the market and claim their share of the restitution and reparations as well. Why? Lack of organization. What are the German Jewish descendants of the Holocaust doing right now? Right now, they're trying to have, you, you gonna love this. They're trying to have more, taking off of everything they can find that says more in Germany. That's what they working on, they ain't trying to get paid for their people getting burnt up in those ovens, right? They trying to get more as a race, that kind of thing. And I'll give you a, a wild guess what they look, what their mothers look like, alright? Anyway, um, and then the Romas, they're like, I don't, incorrect term, gypsies, so they're not like, I guess they're not organized and, uh, stationary enough to get something done. And the Slavic and the Baltic people, they got chunks of country. Why? Because they were already organized as nations, so they got pieces of Germany, right? And then, I love it. So, um, the other victims of the Holocaust, again, they aren't being shoved into the shadow, they're not doing anything about it, because they're not organized. Um, there are no less than seven parent organizations operating numerous satellites globally solely for the purpose of extracting funds from the nations on behalf of dead victims based on their fake nationalities. So, you got Granny Bendet, right? These people, like, their grandchildren are like my age, so they try to get money for their great, um, the, the great grandchildren of these people, right? And it's like, you got an office set up in Japan, what did Japan do? That kind of thing, but they getting it, that's my point, they're getting it, right? And this is not to be construed as a criticism of what the Jew-ish people are doing. Even though the identity that they're doing this with belongs to us. Um, either way, this serves as an opportunity for our people to learn and emulate, right? These people are setting all kinds of precedents based on all kinds of lies. That if we were simply to organize ourselves, we would make greater claims based on the truth behind those lies, right? And now I'm getting into the good part, and hopefully I won't run out of no time, I'm just gonna read through this, right? Just gonna read through it. So, this is the invitation from Mercy Charities to active moors, right? Just gonna read through it. So this is the invitation from Mercy Charities to active Moors, right? If you have to be told to what to do, don't come over here. If you waiting for somebody to, um, to like present you with something, I'm not talking to you. If it's just you, I'm not talking to you either, right? So let me just read through this real quick. So, Mercy Charities was set up to be a connection between our active Moors and generous donors who know what time it is. We are in the process of developing, developing pros- projects and initiatives vital to the revival of our Moorish nation in America. While we are willing and excited, um, excited for this purpose, we need people, right? In the coming weeks, we will be releasing project proposals for public scrutiny and invite the interested to please get in where their feet fit in, AKA spot a need, fill a need, especially if they already have an organization established and operational. So, Mercy Charities is sending out the invitation, the call to active Moors to assist in uplifting fallen humanity through the five air, through five of the areas of activities of self-determination as outlined by Neely Fuller, okay? Five of them. There, I think there's nine. Some people say ten, I think he said nine. So, five that Mercy Charity is focusing on at this time. Economics, education, labor, health and entertainment, right? We already have for us established three other areas, law, religion and sex. We already got that, um, situated. Law, divine constitution, religion, circle seven, sex, sisters auxiliary guide, covered, and the red book, alright? So, these five area, or, okay, so these, um, these can be, these five areas can be expanded upon to include the other areas, war slash conundrum, war and politics once the first five have been established, alright? A few for instances of these five areas. So I'mma read what they are. You'll ju- you'll get it, cause y'all smart. Or y'all are intelligent. So, few for instances, the Moorish Guide Post. I've already, um, started for the, um, craft or drafting the proposal to submit for grant, for, to receive grants for this. I've actually found grants for this. It's crazy. So Moorish Guide Post, right? It covers the areas of education, entertainment, labor and economics. It is, it, the project itself is a revival of the newspaper established by Prophet Noble Drew Ali. Needed are reporters, web developers, web designers, web masters, graphic designers and promoters, right? Next one, Roots Roof covers education, health, labor and economics. The project is a supplemental education program for Moorish and Muslim children. It will start virtually and expand to brick and mortar as numbers of participants in this in certain areas, it, um, increase. And it may be expanded to include medical daycare and elder care. If you don't know what medical daycare is, like, uh, parents with autistic children or children with like, um, dip, they might need nursing care. There's medical daycares. Hospitals will be like, look, if you willing to do this, we just need somebody to basically provide the curriculum. We'll provide the nurses in the space. Um, so needed for Roots Roof. I gotta find a better name for that. Homeschoolers, educators, para- para-professionals, web designers, graphic di- designers and administrators. Next initiative, watermelon trucks, right? Covers education, health, labor and economics. These are just some I'm throwing out, right? This project is, Watermelon Trucks is the revival of the annual tradition of watermelon trucks traveling from the south to the north to engage in commerce and cultural exchange. I don't know if you all are from, um, well, I'm from Chicago. So that was like a, a, a annual thing. We will wait to see those trucks coming up there because they have family up there, right? And this can be expanded to other seasons and other crops, right? And aligns with our goal of becoming more self-sufficient in the realm of agriculture. Needed are farmers, gardeners, teachers, truckers, lodgers, like people who can put folks up who traveling, um, and event organizers, right? Um, needed for all these initiatives, bookkeepers, accountants, paralegals, attorneys of compromise, so practiced non-bar jurors are happily invited. If you have a bar card, don't. Okay, these are just a few initiatives we're fleshing out at this time. These will be used to submit proposals for grants. Again, we are also looking to support Moors who already have projects and initiatives established. We are not venture capitalists. We will not fund your business to fund your life, right? If you and at least three other partners, so there's gotta be four of y'all, right? So if something happens to, one of y'all fall off, maybe the other three will keep it going, right? If three of y'all fall off, maybe that one, that's why, no, no individuals, right? Um, so if you and at least three other partners and children, the age of your children, your children, who are at least of the age of majority are okay, they're accepted. So if it's you and three other people have a business that directly benefits the mission to uplift fallen humanity indirectly benefits you, it's more than okay, right? We are set up to request funding on your behalf. That's what Mercy Charities was set up for. It's like, um, I'll get into that, um. This is the model that the United Way uses, right? If you're familiar with the United Way. They receive and seek donations, right? On behalf of nonprofits that meet critor- criteria of their nonprofits. So United Way goes out and applies for grants. And then these organizations like, oh, we wanna set up, um, after-school soccer program, right? They go to the United Way and apply for the grants. Do you understand? So they're like a middleman. Right? So that's, we're doing it for ourselves, but it's just like, okay, I know how to write grants. Uh, yeah, I could show you how to do it. Or you can just tell me what you're doing and I'll just go get it for you, right? Mercy Charities will go and get your grants for you, that kinda thing. Um, so it's a pass-through charity, if you will. It's just like what the United Way is doing. And this is why the MSTAs temples and prison ministries have lately been the main recipients of grants, again, since the rise of the Moors mistake. That being said, individuals will not be considered. Individuals will not be considered, alright? Um, improperly formed organizations will not be considered, right? If we can't look you up, we can't fi- if we can't find you, we can't fund you, that kinda thing. Um, oh, I'm glad you joined today too, Islam. So, um, this is no different than what any other funding organization is asking of us, right? They want us to prove who we are and that we're properly organized, so we're gonna get money on your behalf, so we need to explain to these people that you are just, if it goes wrong, guess who it's on? So yeah, you need to be set up properly too. And it's good practice anyway, right? So then one day you can go out and do the same thing for somebody else, right? Um, and I'mma end on my final note, yeah. Why? Why? Why, 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 why? The definition of money, right? Why am I doing this? Why am I specifically doing this? I don't know why the other Moors are doing this. I guess they just, you know, some people just like helping. Why am I doing this? The definition of money from the Women's Encyclopedia of Myths and Secrets. Do I have it? Yes, I do. I have lots of dictionaries. So the definition of money, you ready? And I'mma wrap it up with this. So one last time, um, if you would like to help us with any initiatives, they're slowly being added to the website, or you can go on candid.com and see them. And, um, if you already have something going on because a Moore actually reached out and said that he has a nonprofit set up, or she, I'm not sure. They have a nonprofit set up, they just don't know how to apply for grants. Again, my Mars is in Aries. I'm not big on patience. I could show you how to do it, but I'm not big on patience. Just tell me what you doing and I'll go find you a grant. That kinda thing, right? I need to practice. I wanna, I'm, I'm, I'm a grant seeker. I wanna become a major grant seeker. How do you become major? You gotta practice, right? So anyway, money from the Women's Dictionary or Women's Encyclopedia of Myths and Secrets. Um, the so-called root of all evil. It took its name from the, the ti- from the title of Rome's great mother, Juno Moneta, or Juno the admonisher, whose Capitoline ta- temple included the Roman mint. Oh, silver and gold coins manufactured there were valuable not only by reason of their precious metal, but also by the blessing of the goddess herself, which could affect good fortune and healing magic. Later, popes carried on the pagan tradition by blessing Christian amulets and holy medals with, which were also used in trade like money. Um, let's see, the attendant spirit of Juno Moneta was the erotic cupid corresponding to the Greeks' heroes, who was both child and companion of Aphrodite. Thus, cupidity used to mean erotic desire, but in Christian times, its meaning was changed to greed for money. So, why am I doing this? What does this have to do with me? Um, so, these people knew what they were doing, right? Um, money, like matrimony, money, mother's money, money is connected to the moon, right? Y'all guys know how this works. If you can get a woman involved in what you, in your endeavor, eh, she's going to, what, you've heard that, whatever you put, give a woman, she's going to multiply it. You know, you give her food, she gives you dinner. You know, you give her attention, she gives you love. You give her affection, she gives you children, right? So, uh, give me your money. Or no, give me your ideas. That kinda thing, right? Because, uh, Moore once told me a long time ago, um, in your last life, you were a gay man. Thought that coming back a woman was gonna make your life easier. I'm like, well, that's not funny, cause he started laughing. But I'm like, okay, I can use that. So I had the approach of a guy, but I understand that I have, I'm, I'm working with some feminine energy, so let's do something with that, right? So with that, um, yeah, hit me up. Uh, Mercy Charities, or actually you can hit up thanks@mercycharities.org. Um, or info@kalifamedia.com or go on the website, mercy, M-R-C-I charities.org. Or look us up on candid.org. No, I'm sorry. Guidestar, guidestar.org. Um, I think we're on foundations.org, but I don't know if that's accessible to the public. And with that, yeah, I look forward to hearing from y'all. And, um, I guess I'll see y'all next Saturday. You know, I don't know what we're gonna be talking about then. Maybe I'll have my, my presentation on, um, reparations ready. But that was kind of a sneak preview. It's like I'm giving y'all, I might as well just be like I'm done, but I don't know. With that being said, gratitude to you Moors. Appreciate y'all being here and, um, I'll see y'all next time. And make sure you check out the, um, the YouTube one that's gonna have all the graphics in it either tomorrow or Monday. That is love, peace and love and bye-bye.